Good evening and welcome to the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five Regular Board of Education Meeting. We will start with the roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mr. Lu.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mrs. Sully.
Here.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Here.
Mr. Nickram.
Here. And we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at the start of every board meeting, we read our vision and mission statement. Our vision statement simply reads, achieving distinction in all that we do, while our mission statement reads, cultivate an inclusive, high-performing culture of growth and community. Moving on to item two, comments from the audience, and does not look like there are any. All right, move on to item three, the consent agenda this evening.
Yes, as we're aware, Robert's rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board in a single motion. Documentation concerning those items have been provided to all board members well in advance to assure for an extensive and thorough review and will become part of the permanent record. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. This evening you have item A, minutes from the August twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five Regular Meeting. Item B, under personnel, we ask that you make the following appointment effective September fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and contingent upon release from current contracts upon completion and satisfactory results of a preplacement health screening and background check that of Ryan Philbin, one point O F T E Social Studies teacher at Fort Atkinson Middle School, and also accept the resignation request upon satisfaction of liquidated damages for failure to perform in the amount of one thousand dollars, that of Catherine Bodelson, one point O F T E Social Studies teacher at Fort Atkinson Middle School, retroactively effective upon those conditions to August twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Then you have item C, a board policy update thirty-four point two, that is the second reading as a reminder. Item D, we have no gifts to report this evening, but you do have item E, payment of district bills and the treasurer's reports.
All right, thank you for that. Would any board member like to pull anything out or discuss any further?
Move to approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
All right, do we have any motion by Ms. Sully, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Lu?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right, item four, instruction, the two thousand twenty-five Summer School Program Report.
Yes, we're very happy to welcome Mrs. Amy Oakley, our Director of Instruction, to the podium. Once again, as we are well aware, we had a very successful summer school offering and many, many different opportunities for kids that Amy is going to talk us through this evening. Amy?
Thanks so much. Here we are again, in the fall, celebrating a successful summer school session. It always is a pleasure to be able to represent such a big machine of people who work so hard to bring really great opportunities for our students. For the sake of the community, I always like to start by saying our summer school program offers lots of opportunities for both elementary and secondary students to be involved. At the elementary level, and probably what most people connect with summer school is our traditional summer school offering, our morning offering that runs June to July. However, we also offer camps for elementary students as well that take place in a variety of times throughout the summer. We use a non-competitive online signup process that makes sure that kids get the classes they want. We offer classes in academics, including math and reading, as well as we work hard to have lots of choices for kids to go along with those academic classes, from physical activity, technology, art, game-based classes, et cetera. At the secondary level, which has been a focus for us and has really grown over the last five years, we've offered what we call camps, which are shorter length and shorter commitment for older students. They can happen at any time over the summer at various times during the day. We also offer academic offerings in math and reading, as well as high school credit recovery, and our second summer of offering four credit classes for high school students who are trying to fit more into their high school years. They can take FIAID, health, or careers in the summer, during, within summer school. So this summer, our enrollment was at twelve forty-three, that is individual students. Those students may have taken more than one class, but we try to count by noses. Out of those, we had six hundred and eleven of those were elementary students, two hundred and sixty-five were middle school students, and three hundred and sixty-seven were high school students. In our offerings this year, we had a hundred and thirty-four unique offerings. I always think it's nice to show people that out of that, the enrichment classes that consider our traditional summer school program is forty-three offerings alongside thirty academic or intervention offerings. Then we offered thirty-nine different camps to students upper elementary through high school and seventeen credit recovery classes. Our staff is very diverse. We have ninety-three staff members who partake in summer school and help make the magic happen. Out of those, we have just over half are our Fort Atkinson School District employees, and the other half join from other districts just for the summertime, which is great. We had sixty-three percent of our staff return from the two thousand twenty-four session, and twenty-seven percent of that staff was hired new for this session. So you can see how many were teaching what, and they are an amazing group of people that are really excited to spend and provide some really great opportunities for kids. Every year at the end of summer school, we ask families to fill out a survey. That survey gives us information about what classes people are looking for and lets us know what we're doing well and what they would like us to attend to for the following year. So this year, our average was four point four, which we're very proud of. From that, just a quick summary of some of our favorite comments. Parents really appreciative of the fun and educational experiences, nice teachers, good classes. I love the, all the help directing traffic was wonderful. We did make a very big effort. Thanks to Dave Geiger and Justin Stewart, as well as Adam Rousseau, for being out directing traffic. Lots of positive feedback about having summer school all in one building, with an affirmation that the high school really does feel like a great fit. Kids that enjoyed their classes, appreciation for the free busing, especially busing to Luther, if, because Luther was our site for free breakfasts and lunches. Lots of compliments about being well organized, appreciated for credit coursework that can be done in person and online as a flexible setup to meet students' needs. And besides hearing that we had great communication, we were very grateful for the quantity of parents who shared. The construction did not bother us. So we were, thought that was a big win. So really glad to hear that and so appreciative of the families that take the time to give us that feedback. We also asked for feedback from our staff. We got lots of positive on the length. We were four days less than the prior year, simply because the school year went so late. I love the comments about like communication and attentiveness from admin and office staff was top-notch. Joy and positivity of staff, easy to hand out snacks. We did purchase snacks for students to have during the day to make it all the way to noon before eating. Connections with the kids, kept keeping math and reading interventions small. Really liked being at the high school and appreciative of all the support staff that we offer. I think those are all things that make our summer school program unique from others that they may choose to be employed with. So I like to always walk through, whether it was learning how to sew pillows and bags, which by the way, sewing, we ran the most sessions we've ever run before and had the highest number of students. So you never quite know what's going to be the popular class, but this summer it was sewing. So learning how to sew pillows and bags, learning and exploring Minecraft mania, which we added a middle school version this summer that was very popular, exploring STEM concepts using Legos, learning how to be safe in Safety City, having a lightsaber battle in Jedi Academy, which was another, and surprisingly went fine. Learning about rocket science, which is always a very popular class. A new class for us this summer was learning basketball basics and skills. Collecting Harry Potter, Gringotts coins, and the Golden Snitch catapult and howlers. Making birdhouses in the woodworking camp, making artistic creations in art class, creating custom objects in three D printing camp, which they really did some cool stuff this year. Learning new moves and performing on the high school stage for dance camp, which is really cool. Learning how to build a shelter in survival skills camp, enjoying your food creations in Kids in the Kitchen, which has been a newcomer for us a couple of years, and we now leveled up. So we offered a year-two version and actually had a special guest come in who helped introduce the students to making homemade pasta dough, and the students rolled and cut their own noodles. Learning to bump set spike in our new volleyball camp that was very popular. If you're by the high school IMC, check out our new mural that was done during summer school from the students in mural marathon. The always, the always popular fishing and angler education camp. Performing in jazz band camp. And we had, this submitted from a student in photography and video production. I just think it's interesting that not only are those older students, which is really great to see our older students getting involved, but like, they were really into those programs, so. It was just a really awesome summer, so I want to make sure I send a sincere and big thank you to our teaching staff. The summer school support staff is just, is just as outstanding as our teachers and really help us make all the magic happen for kids. Amanda Maling and the Buildings and Grounds team just is stellar for us in supporting summer school. DJ and the tech team, many of these classes utilize technology. We are so appreciative, not only to have them help the technology work, but also set us up so we're taking really accurate attendance. Our nutrition department and team led by Keith really helped us be creative and helped to make it as smooth as possible to get kids lunches. Mandy and Brett in the H R office for all of the new hires that we did. Lisa Hollenberger in the Special Education and Pupil Services team to help make sure all students can access the classes they wanted. My team in the Office of Instruction, and last but definitely not least, our summer school principals, who are, two of them I think are here this evening, Justin Stewart, Dave Geiger, and Adam Rousseau. So, and thanks to our families and students for always making summer school just a really great experience for our students and community. So with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
So as, as we went through this, like, there's a couple of things I wrote down is, is, it feels like a very well-oiled machine, but there's a lot of changes from year to year, like, you know, whether it be my kids, my son went to angling camp, and he was very excited every day, and I'm sure he learned a few things on the, on the, sitting there fishing floor, whatever, an hour or two a day. So that was, that's good. But, yeah, it just, it just seems like it was, it was just such a positive experience for everybody, and yeah, he was excited to go, and that's not always easy to do for a sixth grader. So, yeah, that's, you know, again, well-oiled machine, and at the high school seems to be the right decision, and yeah, appreciate everybody's participation in it.
Yeah, thanks so much. It's always this delicate balance between like keeping the oldies but goodies. I learned that the year we decided not to run the littles Minecraft, and I felt like I got stopped like fourteen times in the grocery store. Like, summer school was great, except, and so Minecraft is back. But then also just having enough that families want to, the kids want to come back. I mean, our, our challenge to ourselves is every year that kids have a hard time picking, because there's so many really cool options. So that's something we really challenge ourselves to do.
The high school for credit classes, that's kind of a newer thing that we've been doing where kids can take credits. It's not just recovery classes for high school.
Correct.
So what, how many were there at the high school level, and are you looking to expand that?
That's a great question. I don't have the number off the top of my head. I don't know if Mrs. Sherrell remembers. There was three offerings, and I believe they were all less than twenty kids. Does that sound right? So probably around fifty students. It's really, what, what has, what's become really effective for it is when students reach that threshold at the high school where they have more electives that they want to take and they can't fit everything in, that then the counselor is able to offer. Do you want to take FIAID in the summer? Do you want to take personal finance and careers in the summer? Do you want to take health in the summer? And what that becomes are those classes that have a wide group of students who need them. They are taught partially onsite and partially at home. We are responsible for the number of hours it takes, which I believe it's like fifty-five, is that right, Leanne? Fifty-five hours that the students have to document in order to get, because it's a first-time credit versus the students who are in credit recovery have already done some work. But for the students, it seems to be students who are in a lot of AP classes, students who are very, very active in a specific subject area and want to take every elective. So whether that's a tech ed student, an AIG student, or an art or music student. But it's been a really nice offering, great appreciation for Todd Carter, who taught the personal finance and careers class, and then Liz Culver, who taught the health and FIAID. And having our own teachers do that really also brings a level of rigor to make sure that it's equivalent to what it is during the school year, because when we started to talk about it, we did not want it to be the easy way out. So having two, two high school girls who did FIAID, it was definitely not the easy way out. But it was really helpful, because then during the school year, they can access those classes that they're wanting to access.
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, you show a lot of fun stuff going on, and I think a lot of us who remember the traditional summer school that Ford always offered, it was all the fun stuff. I mean, the crafts that I still have around my house and everything.
Painting on glass.
Painting on glass, and little sewing, stuffed animals that pop up every now and then. But I would like to send my son maybe to the sewing class, learn how to sew some buttons. But, um, but I think that, I mean, it really keeps their minds going and the creativity and kind of the routine. And so I wonder if you could just talk a little bit about the benefits of summer school, not just, you know, it's not just a babysitting service for the school district, you know, that the school district provides, but what are some of the benefits of the summer school?
Absolutely. My favorite night is when we do, when we, we do an open house night where students can come to the high school and look for their classes. They come running in those doors. They are so excited to see their friends. And really, that idea of continuing to get up in the morning to continue to do academic tasks, even when it's a fun class, we try to work in reading, writing, or some sort of fun math. They are connecting with their peers. They have some structure in terms of changing classes and following routines. And we have been, this year, we're actually tracking students who tried, who were in summer reading and math to see if we noticed a difference from summer slide. Regardless, the fact that this many, the fact that almost one thousand two hundred and fifty kids, you know, chose to come and have a really high-quality experience, rather than sitting in front of their device all summer at home. It was free. It's equitable that anyone can access it, and it's really something that, when you're connected to it, it's, it's just a win. People feel really positive about it, very appreciative for it. And it does offer students and families a way to kind of keep their toe in the academic area and in school without it feeling like you're in school all summer.
Yeah, the social aspects, the structure, I think all of those are, you know, that there's a lot of benefit to it. My last question is about the twelve hundred forty-three students. It said resident and non-resident.
Yeah.
So can you talk a little bit about that, that who is it all offered to?
So we, we are reimbursed from the state for any resident students, and any student who lives in our school district can access summer school.
Regardless of whether they attend.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, so we have a very healthy relationship with our private schools who are, are very much connected to summer school. When we have non-resident students, they come for a variety of situations. We have had non-resident students who are going to be open enroll students that we've allowed. So once they've actually committed to coming to us for open enrollment, we allow them to come to summer school. We have had some circumstances where students are participating in other programs that we make exceptions. But as a whole, we really stick to resident students. I, I don't know if she had, how many she had on. The, we do every year, I would say, at least twenty questions we get about whether we'll open summer school and people can pay to come to our summer school. It's something that we thought about at one point. I'm just a little nervous, though, and I'm not sure we could get to the scale that, that we might get if we opened up, but I could double-check to see how many of those. I would guess that non-resident number is very small.
Yeah, but what, I mean, the main thing is, is we want to service all the students that are within our district.
Correct.
And that's even students that don't go to Fort Atkinson during the school year.
If they have an address over the summer, so we have some families where they come and live with grandma and grandpa over the summer in Fort Atkinson, they can come to summer school because they have an address that qualifies them.
And you said it's reimbursed, that it's not, that we don't charge the families for it, or there's a nominal fee?
Yeah, we don't charge anything for summer school. We, the only thing you're allowed to charge for summer school is consumables. When we, when I first started working with summer school, we did charge ten dollars and the amount of work it took to try to hold people accountable for ten dollars. And then we had to justify that that full ten dollars was spent on consumable items for the specific class that they were in. Like a basketball class doesn't have a lot of consumables, where an art class or a sewing class has a lot of consumables. So at that point, we just, from that pure state, our, hours of people trying to get the money, and it was a deterrent. So we don't, don't take anything, which really makes it a lot cleaner for us, to access these state funds. And we work hard to make sure that our class sizes are such that we are always operating, that we're earning more than we're spending. So summer school is self-sufficient and typically makes, makes money for the district as well.
You know, I think you were talking about supplies. I mean, one of my favorite times of the year is when classes are released and people clean out their fabric and yarn closets and bring them to Luther, because there's definitely a fair amount of donation. Apparently, people have a lot of yarn in their closets, because the knitting and crocheting is also popular. Sewing, I thought, was interesting, because at one point that had sort of like died out, and here it is back. But really, what I wanted to point out before you took other questions is, for us to look at this pie chart and to see that half are high school and middle school age students, I bet if we played the report from five or six years ago, that was a tiny slice on that pie. And the questions were about, how do we bolster middle school and high school offerings? How do we attract and get more kids involved in camps or in booster classes, or whatever the case might be? This is a work in progress, and that's what's exciting about it, but that is an amazing statistic right there, because it was truly just a few years ago when those groups were super underrepresented compared to elementaryes.
And really, that really came from our families of, wow, when my kid goes to middle school, I really want them to still do summer school, but they don't want to do the whole get up at eight o'clock and be there for four hours. So our kids have a lot of fun in summer school, and I think they see that continuing through middle school. Their friends sign up, and then, especially when a teacher has a passion area that they share, you know, like, like a Nick Homily with armor and anvils. Like, kids love to see a teacher do something that they're really passionate about. So it's really, it's really cool to see the older students, and now that we're at the high school, it's really awesome to see our older students helping our younger students that first week and have not been asked and just find it so fun to help the kids. Look at the floor, what color is the floor? Blue, then it turns to a B. So it's, it's just been really great being at the high school.
You know, I was, I was asked the other day by a teacher at the high school, and they said, what is something that our community does well? And I, I struggled, just like anyone else, because, you know, I'm always right away with a complaint, right? And I, and I looked at this, and I thought back, we moved here ten years ago. We moved here in May, all right? My kids went right into the summer school program as soon as we got here. It was instantaneous community for my kids. They came in seamlessly, straight into the elementary school, straight into a friend group, everything else. Now, school wasn't terrifying for them, starting somewhere new after, after moving here from, you know, Colorado. So the, I think that we, we do an excellent job, and I think this program shows it, of building community. And, you know, I mean, you know, we could look around at a bunch of adults and be like, uh. But you, you look at the kids and you just see them, you know, at what we're trying to teach here. And just like you said, they're at the high school with the big kids. I remember being a little kid, and anytime the big kids came around, we were all like, oh my God, the big kids are here. You know, everyone wanted to be a big kid, you know, and then, then once we got to adulthood, we're like, oh man, this kind of stinks. But the, you know, I want, I want to be, I want to be in fourth grade again. But, you know, the, the thing is, you know, you gotta, you start paying ten dollars. It's not that meeting yet. But, you know, we, we do a great job of building community, and the fact that this comes at a profit to the school district, the, the amount of stewardship that we're taking over the money that's coming in for this, and turning out, I mean, yeah, okay, I got a bunch of, you know, stuff all over the house and little trinkets and things, but, you know, it's, it's cool. It's, it's good stuff. So, you know, I think that the summer school program is, is truly well done. It's something that our community can be really proud of.
Thanks so much, Mr. Lewis.
All right, my turn. You know, I'm like one of your biggest supporters here. I love, love, love our summer school. Can you touch a little bit more on the, on the school lunches that were served? Were they all free this year?
If students, it, yes, as long as they accessed it from Luther. So that was a hard thing for families to understand. However, I think we tried our hardest to communicate, 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 and let people know. Everything from Keith and his team making it easy to do drive-through pickups to offering, we ended up having three, right, three Luther buses? So you think full buses of kids that came from the high school to Luther so that they could access lunch, and then their parents pick them up at Luther. So we did our best to make it accessible. Obviously, people appreciated when it was at the high school, but I think we did everything we could. We sure gave out a lot of free lunches, and that's something I could add in in the future. But overall, I mean, But overall, I mean, even letting people take the, you know, the breakfast for the next day, or once students were, families had given names, you know, Keith worked with them. We really, the, the meals that families receive, they are so appreciative. And so I, I think it's definitely worth doing. And now, I think we have a good idea of how to do it here centrally, if it needs to be at Luther again.
And can you explain why it was at Luther and not at the high school?
Well, I can do my best.
Well, actually, if you listen to my podcast, this is covered in episode two. I'm just saying. But Mr. Van Gelder and Katie from our kitchen here really did a really nice job of explaining. And I think, you know, it, it's always not surprising to me, you know, people point out like, well, jeez, they should have lunch at, at the high school. It's like, well, yeah, we absolutely would if we could. So the way that works in a nutshell is that it's through qualification of the home school. So our entire district qualified for the federal free breakfast and lunch program, but it can only be purveyed through a school building that meets certain criteria based on student composition. So our only building in the district that qualified is Luther. So if you remember back when we had programming at Purdy and at Luther, the nutrition services staff actually set up a kiosk on the corner, so kids came over, got their lunch and breakfast, and went back to Purdy. So we are absolutely tied to having to serve those free meals from the building location for which they're qualified. It turned out nicely in being Luther is that it's an easy building for people to get in and out of. It was really fun. It was there a few different days to watch the parade of cars come through, and then the buses came through, and it became a bit of a social scene as well. But in the future, we hoped that that program still exists, first of all. It is a federal program. But whatever building or buildings qualify, then those become part of the options that we might have moving forward. To be very honest with you, for the high school to qualify based on that criteria isn't likely. High schools, like statewide, it just wouldn't be likely. But I do think that people bent over backward in order to get those meals out to people, that number grew. I, I think he said they served 22,000 meals. Honestly, I would need to look back. I think that's the number he gave. And, yeah, I mean, it was quite the production line, for sure, but definitely built, and I guess what I was going with that is, and I think the agility of the summer school admin staff and Double Three to actually add busing, given the volume of people that were now wanting to come, because it was also nice, if you were, you know, wanting to drop your kids off here, they hop on a bus, and you pick them up in an empty parking lot at the end of summer school. So I think there was, you know, we also have a lot of kids that walk in these neighborhoods, too. So really, the, the location worked out great that way.
Thank you.
Maybe it's because I, I haven't had supper yet, but I was thinking about food still. And you mentioned that this, this is the first year you've had a snack in the middle of the morning, and was that food services provided also, or did you do that separately?
It was through food services. We typically, in the past, had served breakfast and lunch when we were at the high school. The first year, and the high school qualified that year only because there was construction.
Because, because the home buildings were closed, we were able to transport to the high school. So believe me when I say, we worked tirelessly trying to come up with reasons that that would work this summer, and it wasn't possible, so.
Yeah, so once we realized that we weren't going to be able to access those, we really made a decision to equip the teachers with a non-perishable snack purchased through, so granola, think like granola bars, goldfish crackers, things like that.
A lot of goldfish crackers.
A lot of goldfish crackers. Just so that, that students who maybe hadn't eaten before they came had something to eat between eight AM and noon. So the teachers were able to have those in their rooms. I think kids appreciated, and families, we did pay for those, it was a nominal amount, but the teachers were very appreciative that the kids, they had something to give the kids that was, you know, safe and helped them not be hungry.
Right, right.
And can you talk about the partnership with BASE?
So.
Because BASE was picked up from the high school as well and bussed over to their new location.
Yes, so where that was very nice for us is that, in the past, BASE students all were supposed to ride Luther or Purdy, and this year, they did all their own transportation. So at the high school, the high school team, Mr. Geiger, Mr. Stewart, and Mr. Rousseau, made a really smart decision to have the bus kids in the back of the high school and the pickup in the front. So BASE was able to have their own, you know, their, gather their own students, be responsible for their own attendance and things like that, because attendance on the buses is one of our most precise, difficult jobs we do, because we want to make sure we don't leave a kid at the high school by accident, or, you know, all those things that, getting the right kid on the right bus, and many, many bus students in the summer who are not bus students during the year. We have heard from families that their kids are so excited that they get to be riding the bus, which also means that we're teaching a bunch of kids how to ride the bus. So it's, it's a really great part. We also had a, a class with the Chamber this summer, so, where they did the sales. I don't know if anyone saw that, at the farmer's market, but it really is something that the community is appreciative of, and, and wanting to be connected to as much as that makes sense.
And planning for next summer has begun.
Planning for next summer has already begun, yes. So we already, this is when we start really going through and taking inventory of what was popular. We try to really look at those suggestions that families give us. And we are ready, then in January, we reach out to all of our staff and ask that we would like them to return, invite them to return, which is really helpful, because then we get in before they find something else. And then, before we know it, before spring break, we'll be signing up for priority registration, so if you know of whatever the cool class is going to be next summer, be sure to let me know.
All righty, thank you so much for that.
Thanks so much.
All right, up next, non-instruction is start of school updates.
Yes, I just wanted to share a few comments. It's hard to believe that we're already in the middle of September, and we've now had kids in buildings for a couple of weeks. I think it's really important for us to acknowledge, celebrate, and thank all of our district staff for their tireless efforts to get this machine up and running, to get themselves ready, to get our facilities ready, to get their heads ready, and to get classroom and learning spaces ready, because I really have to say, having been in and out of the buildings quite a lot in the last few weeks, by day two or three, the buildings were up and humming along, and it felt like we were still in last spring in a very positive way. So the amount of time dedication and, and effort in that planning to get to that point is, is really simply outstanding. We did also receive an awful lot of support, clearly, from students and families. We did have, with our new calendar, a little bit of extra time built in for staff, so there was some paid time for classroom preparation, there was some paid time for some state and federal required classes, or sort of mini video courses that need to be taken. And then we had some really quality professional learning district-wide as well, that was all built into that startup. So again, really, an incredibly smooth start. We also appreciate that people have accommodated the new traffic pattern at the high school, as referenced in summer school, to accommodate, the city's work with the new subdivision, which we continue to be excited about the, the pace of that progress with that project. The city's road project was absolutely on schedule, and in fact, we got it around thirty-eight hours early, so now that we're counting. But so when that project was completed, it really did become obvious that the high school needed to have two-way traffic behind the school to accommodate the traffic circle, and, and I think people really didn't mind that being two-way behind the high school this summer. So Marigold is the road that will eventually take people out to Hoard Road, which hopefully will be opened in the first part of 2026, which will again change traffic flow. There'll be three different places to get at the high school campus now. So I guess where I'm going with all of that is, we thank people for accommodating and learning a new, more permanent traffic pattern, which allows for traffic to flow in both directions behind the high school, maintaining a one-way path in front of the high school. And as we all know, change is hard, but people have been pretty accommodating, and soon this fall, you'll be receiving a, a report to consider reworking our road behind the high school next summer as well. So hopefully, we'll have some road construction and improvements of our own going on back there as well. So the reason that's important is because that all happened on the first day of school. So that new traffic pattern was up and running. Again, the buildings and grounds and maintenance departments and some local businesses worked their tail off to make that happen smoothly. And logistically, the beginning of school worked very, very well with our busing services and traffic flow and all of those things as well. But to circle back to probably what's most important is, I think if you've visited any of our seven school buildings, on any random day, at any random time, you would not be surprised but amazed by the quality of teaching and learning that was up and running instantly when we welcomed kids in September. And that doesn't just happen. And I just came from a conference of state superintendents where there were 350 or 400, and I don't think all of them can say the same thing. So it's with great pride that, that that's what we have from our One Fort teams, so. And I would just end by saying, as part of the meeting I was at in Madison today, the State of Education address was given by State Superintendent Underly, and I, and I won't retell the story that she did, although it is worth telling. But the gist of it, I thought, was, was really powerful and really hearkened me back to our last board meeting, where some comments were talked about the importance of public schools and the fact that we serve all. And the gist of her story, I thought, was very powerful, which was, we never leave kids on the outside of a fence in a public school. We move the fence, and we include all of the kids. And we move the fence every time we need to, to bring them all in, meet them where they are, help them get the growth that they deserve with their time with us, but we always move the fence. And that, I think, is incredibly clear in each and one of our buildings as you spend time there. So again, one more congratulations and a thank you to everyone involved in getting the school year up and running as well as we have.
And my assumption is that tomorrow's a busy day for all, Third Friday.
Yes, and tomorrow is a Third Friday count, so if you don't know, the state collects data twice during the year, and those student numbers are then what translate into state aid. So that's part of the reason that we moved the October board meeting, is because all of those numbers need to be accounted for and come together. But tomorrow is a pretty big day for us, yes.
I just want to say, I appreciate you sharing the start of school, because, I mean, as much as, as in our individual households, getting back into school mode, recognizing all the different things that have to happen to get the schools up and running, and how well you've seen it just go right away. I mean, veteran staff, new staff, admins, I mean, just everyone working together. And I appreciate you sharing that, because I think it's something that's taken for granted a little bit, that like, we're back in school, but it is a challenge to get everything going as smoothly as it could.
And with the calendar changes that happened, you know, I was always curious to find out, like, you know, what effect does that really have on a particular school year, so I'm happy to hear that, you know, there were some positive things coming from that, so. Yeah, it's a, yeah, exciting start, so.
Very much so.
Great.
All right, next we have items for future board meetings.
Yes, among other topics, you'll have the 2025-26 Academic and Career Plan for your approval, the enrollment report, which we were just referencing, based on the Third Friday count, to see how many of those kiddos we have in classrooms. You'll receive the Start College Now and Early College Credit requests. You'll be looking at some budget adjustments. Also, we'll acknowledge School Board Appreciation Week, which all of you really. I know, like, I mean, it'll be after the parade, so there's that.
It's your first year.
It's a very small float. But School Board Appreciation Week is October 5th through the 11th, and we do just take a moment to acknowledge your service, which, of course, we appreciate. I also would just like to mention that next week is Homecoming Week, not just for the high school, but for our entire community. Activities beginning with dodgeball on Sunday, talent show on Monday, there's Powder Puff in there.
I saw the Powder Puff practicing with the lights on and everything, so that's, that's going to be something to watch.
And maybe some information about that in the One Fort Report?
Well, actually, yes, in the podcast. Monday's episode, it was really an awesome, an awesome time this week, meeting with a couple of high school students and with Mrs. Sherrell, to talk a little bit about homecoming as a total, but like, to hear the students talk about their leadership and their peers' leadership in planning and getting ready, and how much that, like, means to them, I think is, is really what it's about. And I would encourage people to listen for a lot of reasons, but if not for that, because that is the sum total of our work with kids, to get them to the point of that conversation I had this week. It was really quite moving, so.
I mean, you talk about the start of school, and just seeing some of the activities going on at the start of school, there has been a energy that I've seen that has, has been, I think, you know, surpasses other years. It's just, it's felt like they're already in it, and, you know, football games and the youth football that was there, and, I mean, the band, and so, I mean, I think that homecoming is a good example, not to just plug your One Fort Report, but to learn about some of the things in the district. But also, that Homecoming Week is a really big deal.
It is, and as well it should be.
I think that at the beginning of the year, all that activity is just, it creates an energy, it creates a community, and that's all just a positive environment, so.
Well said. So there's that.
Then there's that.
And then you will have a couple of reports coming in November, that of our population study, and also an update to the facilities report on the Ford Atkinson Middle School. So November will definitely be a little thicker meeting for us, but some really good data coming in that will really help us, I think, find out what questions we might want to get some answers to as well. So don't let this short meeting fool you, so.
Have a work ahead, right?
I'm talking about the short meeting.
All righty, moving to item eight.
Move to adjourn. I'll say it.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Selly and a second by Ms. Reynolds. All those in favor?
Aye.
All righty, 616 this evening, meeting adjourned.
I think Robin had the first.